Oh, it's my.
Whatever works for you is what I. Oh, it's very good. I'm caffeinated, so we're.
Okay.
Yeah, I guess I don't really need to join this.
You guys have a pen?
Yeah.
You.
That's a good point. Should I put one on that? Not gonna be. I'll just join it, just in case.
Thank you. You're in. I think it's ten.
We do not have an hour worth of work session content tonight, so we can start and end early and eat and whatever, so.
Okay.
Place some get to know you game.
At least I hope that we don't have an hour. Talked about a fence and now. Have you?
Are you sure?
I tried to stop talking a little too premature.
No, I mean, it's like.
Yeah.
Screw that thing right now, letting you join as an attendee.
They don't. They know what's there.
It's like trying to start the meeting even though the meeting is already going.
Yeah.
It's.
Cause you're in as a co-host.
Definitely up then. You.
Let's see. We'll try it again.
Yeah, it should be okay.
It just.
It just.
But then, like, when I went to sign in, it was like, you have to end the meeting.
Oh, yeah, that's always true when you want to do that. Stupid zoom.
Stupid sale.
It's zoom. I think we have a lot of technology that still is a little glitchy.
That was an interesting meeting on Monday.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Very.
That was interesting.
Yeah.
It sounds like they had a good turnout.
Well attended.
Forty-seven, I think is what.
We had a good showing from. Young staff and council and.
That's great.
Fine commission, so.
Hey, Mike, we are ready. Um, wherever you are, do you want us to start?
Yeah, we can. Ready? Yeah, let's do it.
All right, we'll call it, we'll do the. October nineteenth, twenty twenty-two Cottonwood Heights Planning Commission Working Session. And we're gonna go over. The items that we have in the business. Uh, session, which is just the one item, the CUP twenty-two zero eleven. Um, about the. Eight-foot wall. And um. Any other additional discussion items? Do we have any other discussion items?
No, we may soon. We may have a Dover Hill update, uh, maybe at the next meeting, but not tonight.
Okay. Does anyone else have any items that they want to discuss? All right, we have Commissioner Ebler on Zoom, and then in the room, we have Sean, Commissioner Simon. Mills. I'm doing last names. Shelton, Anderson, and Alan. Uh, all right, so Mike, do you want to go through the?
Yeah, thanks. I won't unless you'd like. I won't plan to go through every slide here. Most of these are identical from last time. You'll, I'll just give the the quick summary and then jump to maybe the one update that you have. This was noticed and heard at the October fifth planning commission meeting. Two public comments were submitted, one by the applicant, one by the neighbor. You received one additional public comment, again, from the applicant's representatives. Uh, for tonight. But this is a conditional use, uh, application for a, what we call a wall height extension. It allows the construction of. Fences and walls and combinations of the two. Of a height beyond six feet and up to eight feet with certain approval and up to twelve feet with certain other approval. Uh, Commissioner Sheldon was involved in this, uh, in a, in a different capacity in the past, spent a lot of time with this ordinance. So, um, the, the particular request is on seventy-two seventy-five Callador Cove in the side yard. And you'll notice from the, the previous presentation, the staff report, the wall is already built. There was kind of a tenuous history of. Applications and withdrawals and. Illegal construction and appeals that have led us to where it is tonight, but. Uh, at the end of all that, we have been, you know, through that process, basically, uh, directed from the city's appeals hearing officer to. Even retroactively, the city has to accept these applications and process them. As a potential remedy for the violation of building this, um, eight-foot fence without a permit. So we are processing it as if it hasn't been built with the same criteria that any other fence height extension, uh, is reviewed by. Um, only a portion of the fence actually, uh, extends beyond six feet in height. Anything six feet or less is a permitted. It's just permitted to be constructed. It doesn't require a permit or any special approval. So there's just a portion of the fence that exceeds eight feet. Um, I think I have an image, yeah. You can see most of the fence in the, you know, the front portion of the, the, the fence or the wall here. Is only six feet tall or even less than that, but the property slopes down as you go from front yard to backyard. So in the back here of this, of this wall, the, the total height at its highest point is exactly eight feet. There's the timeline I talked about that, you know, this began back in March and it's gone through various steps and appeals and decisions to get to where it is now. We got the relevant ordinances in here. There, there's one section of the ordinance that regulates. Um, fence height or wall height extensions as conditional uses. Um, we are, just as a reminder, this, this category here of up to eight feet, so they're allowed with conditional use and building permit. They do not require sign neighbor consent. We've looked, uh, I'll just reiterate this, uh, for the record. Um. One of the comments has said the, the. Uh, they don't believe the, the fence is, is, should be defined as a fence or a wall, rather part of the structure of the home. And therefore subject to. Um, you know, residential setbacks rather than being allowed to be on the property line, but the definition of fence in our ordinance is. A barrier of any material or combination of materials erected to enclose screen or separate areas and, um. You know, based on analysis, this meets that definition. So staff considers this a fence or wall. Now, what I will draw, the, the new information I have for you tonight, will focus on these two. Criteria here, and mainly the second one. Uh, basically, the existence of unique or special circumstances exist. Um, and then the second one is erection of a fence or wall is the most reasonable solution under the circumstances. The applicant's rationale that was provided, uh, in the staff report and in their application was, uh, it had four things. One was to provide the family's pets with access to the backyard, um, and to mitigate noise caused by the pets. To screen utilities, um, and to increase privacy. Uh, I, I do want to point out that since twenty nineteen, about fifteen of these applications have been reviewed and approved. Using, um, privacy as a, a rationale in, in most of those. And in a lot of them, you have a, a fairly similar condition, um, maybe contextually a little different, but where. A, a lot of property in Cottonwood Heights slopes, so you have different elevations from lot to lot. And a, you know, six-foot fence on one property might only functionally be four feet on another, so you've got grading differences. A little different here, but where the property slopes off to the back. The, the eight-foot, uh, requirement is done to maintain that same fence level, uh, throughout the, the, the wall itself. Uh, but we, we've used that, uh, rationale as acceptable in all of these past applications that have all. Uh, none of these have been denied. Some have, some have applied and withdrawn, but, but no offense application that I can recall have been, uh, flat out denied. So here's where I'll get, this is, this is a new slide for tonight. And, and I just want to clarify this for the commission. When staff looked at this, the proposed wall height extension. Found to be, um, the most reasonable solution to the utility screening and privacy concerns. Especially given the slope of the property from front to back where it drops off. Uh, the portion of the wall that is greater than six feet is located along, like I said, a naturally slow portion of the property. And the extended portion of the wall is consistent in high point elevation with the rest of the wall. It's not higher there in the back. It's the same elevation. Uh, similar rationales been used as a basis of approval in previous wall height extension applications. So in terms of privacy and utility screening. This, uh, this to staff is more reasonable than another solution like, you know, moving utilities to, you know, somewhere else on, on the property or something like that. Or regrading the property or something more drastic. However. This, this, and that, that, that finding there is what serves as the basis for staff's recommendation of approval tonight. That, that's the primary. Uh, rationale that we found. We, we do not. Necessarily agree with the applicant's, um. Statement that. Um, the, the wall height extension is the most reasonable solution to the concerns over pet access or noise. Given the size of the yard, um, the, the applicant could reasonably just locate those animals somewhere else. So if that were the only stated criteria, maybe it doesn't meet that on its own, but given the privacy and, and screening. Concerns, that is why we have recommended approval like we have with, uh, other applications of this type. Just the two conditions there that are pretty standard. They do require building permits. We're saying here, even though the fence has already been built. They have to go through all the steps to get a building permit, and if any of that wall needs to be. You know, opened up or revealed to, to do a necessary inspection, then they are, uh, required to do that. And then again, because it's already been built, they need to get that permit, uh, application submitted to the city within thirty days of any decision. And then just, uh, uh. This has not been stated as an intent, but just as a cover, that fence cannot be enclosed with a roof. Uh, because at that point, it does become a structure and not a fence. So any questions on this? If you take away all the weird contacts in our processing this, just like other wall height extensions, it's, it's fairly straightforward in staff's view. The, the rationale, at least some of the rationale they've stated of, of justifying the request is reasonable. To staff and has been used as a basis in past cases.
So do we take into consideration the, the width? Of the. Wall slash fence. Um, I mean, is that, is that something that's evaluated?
Well, it.
A standard.
Yeah, we're, we're just going on the definition of fence here.
So just up that.
Any combination of materials. Obviously, if, if it was so wide that it encroached on the other property, that's an issue, but it doesn't. So it is, it's wider, it's, you know, it's a stucco kind of fancy wall, I guess. But, but no, there's no clarification in the ordinance of, you know, it can only be this wide or this wide or whatever.
Okay.
For a conditional use, it's not one of the determinations that we can even consider under this statute.
Can you say that again?
Sure. Um, un- under, under the statute, under nineteen point eighty-four point oh eighty, it's the determinations that we have to make. There's sixteen criteria. That we can consider for the determination of either voting for it or against it. And, and width is not one of them, but there, but can, can, Mike, can you go back to the, um? The note on the noise?
Uh, this one?
Yeah, that's, so. In nineteen eighty-four, um, point oh eighty. Subsection B, paragraph. Two. It reads, "That such use which will not, under the circumstances of the particular case, be detrimental to the health, safety, comfort. Order or general welfare persons residing or working in the vicinity, and also in the same section, paragraph." I'm just looking for it. Oh, eleven, "That appropriate buffering will be provided to protect adjacent land uses from light, noise, and visual impacts." So I was, I was pretty underwhelmed with the, the neighbors' legal argument on the structure. I don't, I don't, it's. Clearly not a structure based on our code. But they did raise some, some issues in terms of that there's been additional noise and whatnot, and. I, I think we need to address that or rationalize that based upon those two paragraphs.
Sure. Staff's finding there is the, the dogs were there. Prior to the fence, so that, so the use of that side yard as a dog run is not. What's being reviewed, it's the construction of a portion of this wall over eight feet. I don't think the, the wall makes the noise. Worse, um, but it, but we don't think it makes it necessarily better and it, and is the primary rationale for. Recommending approval of a taller fence. So the fence itself doesn't, I don't think, affect. The, the noise or the animal, you know. Any of the impacts of that that were already occurring before this fence was built.
Can you, can you go back to the rationale that they, that they did? I, I saw something in particular I wanted to look at. So like. So their rationale was about, uh, mitigating noise from neighboring properties. That seems to me. Completely opposite of what the neighbor's saying. Um, and, and provide family pets from unnecessary access to the backyard. And a- as the staff note indicated, there was other areas that, that could have happened. So like, if the noise isn't because of utilities, if it's because of the pets specifically, it seems like they are causing. The issue specifically by producing the fence. And I'm not sure that, like, you know, whether it's a six-foot or eight-foot fence, it makes one ounce of difference on noise or screening or whatever else. I don't even know that the utilities are back on the sloped area. I would, I would doubt that anyways, right?
I think one important factor to come back to is precedent with how we've considered other wall height, uh, applications, extension applications, and the fact that privacy has. Been kind of a resounding factor at those. So, you know, there are a lot of different, um, rationales given here by the applicant.
Sure.
I don't think we necessarily need to say, like, every single one of these is found to be in agreement with the planning commission's determination or staff's recommendation, but. I do think a notable one would be privacy and that, that has been consistent across the board with all past applications.
Yeah, I, I, and, and it's a totally legitimate argument and. In terms of precedent and whatever else, the problem is, is like, you know, if, if, if. If. Applications have just been decided one way and, and not necessarily add, add it here to the sixteen determinations. With, with specific findings of fact. That, that, you know, regardless of those determinations, like I wasn't privy to it, I, you know, I, I didn't vote on it, so it becomes more problematic for me, like voting on this one. Regardless of the precedent, because precedent doesn't matter. Every application basically says, you have to, you have to view this conditional use. You know, in a bubble and, and say, like, you know, it doesn't meet the determinations or not. Can you mitigate it or not? Um, and.
The commissioner, I would push back against that because staff reviews all of these with the same, the same staff analysis occurs. We've got that reference to, to the conditional use criteria you're. Referring to in the staff report, and that happens on all of these.
No, I totally, totally understood, totally understood, and, and I think, I think. So nineteen eighty-four dot oh sixty says that there's a staff report and, and it, it, it's, you know. A staff report evaluating the conditional use application shall be prepared and, and, and evaluated. But that's one aspect of the determination. It's not, it's not the be all and all. It's a, it, it's, it's a recommendation. That, that we can follow or not follow, but ultimately the planning board. Still has to follow the sixteen criteria and say, does it meet it or not? And I get the precedent and, and, and I think. I, I hundred percent can see the fact that, that you should follow the same set of guidelines and whatever else. But it, it's this, this in particular, like, I, I, I just think it's super important that we. Evaluate the criteria and, and say, like, does it meet it or not? And I, I have a really hard time. Rationalizing when you have a neighbor saying, no, this doesn't mitigate it when there's a specific determination we have to make that says. A person residing in the area. That it doesn't impact them. Like, I don't, I don't know how to rationalize that.
I'll just note that staff has found that the sixteen. Criteria do meet it from our perspective, certainly. Appropriate for the commission to weigh that as well. Um. And I think that's, that's part of the discussion tonight. It was just for you guys to kind of think through that and decide. We, we are confident in our staff recommendation.
I, I think that looking at what the neighbor has said. To me is not. Relevant to evaluating whether an eight-foot. Fence can, can go in. It sounds like to me there are different issues going on here that. Um, need to be, need to be resolved. I mean, if there, if there was a. A, a dog barking loud is something that our, or the ordinance, city Cottonwood Heights ordinance. Folks need to, to take a look at. It's not something that is part of evaluation of whether and. That, uh, an eight-foot fence.
One thing.
Can be. Erected.
One thing the commission may also consider is, um, could it potentially be the case that even with a six-foot fence, which anyone can go out and build, those dogs would still be barking in the same area? So, you know, if there is a nuisance having to do with odor, sight, sound, et cetera, that can be dealt with through code enforcement. We have that option. Um, I don't, I don't see, and I think kind of what Mike was saying earlier is I don't see that there's a greater. Impact from an eight-foot fence with that potential. Noise issue than there would be with a six-foot. In fact, the applicant has noted that. The increased height may even make it better. I don't know that that's. Accurate. I, you know, obviously haven't done a decibel rating out there, but. I, I think it's good to consider kind of the. Is that actually part of the, the application before you tonight, which is, is for the wall itself? If there's an issue happening with pets. That could seemingly be happening with any type of barrier, six feet, six or eight.
And I think with this one, too, we have to look at it as if it's not. Already built.
Yes.
I, I, because I think a lot of what we hear from the neighbor as well is talking about the. Something going on with the, and, and with the building of the fence. So if we think about this in terms of. What, i- it, let's pretend like the fence isn't built. It, it's frustrating that they built it without a permit, but that's not ours. That's not ours to, to resolve or deal with here. So I think we have to evaluate it based simply on the fact. Uh, let's pretend like this fence isn't built. And. Is it okay that it be approved and built?
I think you guys are asking all the right questions to kind of weigh that. Weight of situation.
I have another clarification. Um, I don't know if you have this, uh, slide, but I'm curious. There's a, a set of cement steps that are. Close to the, the fence. On the inside, on the interior.
On the inside.
Um, I want to know. Are those fence, are those steps tied structurally in any way to this fence? Is a rebar continuous in any way?
I don't know the answer to that.
And I, I think that's a critical piece because, you know, structurally, if one is a part of the other, then. At some point, if you were to take the, if you were to take the steps away, or let's say you were to take the wall away, would that impact the, um? The continuity of the steps? Would they, would they become unsafe? And.
I think that when you look at it for a permit, wouldn't they, I, I guess maybe they might look at, but I think.
Again, we don't, the permit issue is, you know. Been an issue with this project to begin with. I just want to know if they, if they're connected, when we start talking about, is it a structure, is it a fence? If it's connected to anything else. That, that's a different, it plays a different role if it's connected to those stairs in any material way. Because those could, those could be completely separated. Right, and then it's a fence.
I think that's a fair advantage, what you'd be thinking of. From, I'd also caution against maybe using that as a definition of fence versus, versus structure, just. Given that our code doesn't make any specification, that a fence has to be completely separate. You know, if our code had something that said it can't be tied in, I think that would be a direct link, but. Just consider that, that the code doesn't specify that they can't be. Structurally connected.
I, I would say, Sam, that I, I believe that it, um, it would change it if there were retaining wall, but the. The, the standards that we would hold them to would be regarding what, what would make that retaining wall safe. And so, you know, when we're talking about enclosures and things like that, and the fact that we've said, well, you can't put a roof on it. I would add teeth to that to say. A fence is a fence, you know, it's not.
Well, this is fence and walls, this ordinance, so it does apply. Like, in, in a case that, um, that. Kind of led to this, the development of this ordinance was a. Fence built directly on top of a retaining wall, and it's a cumulative height. That whole thing is considered a wall or fence.
Okay.
One's a retaining wall, one's a fence. Together, it's considered a wall under this ordinance.
So, so does that mean that the, whatever engineering requirements are for the retaining wall are now obsolete? I don't, I don't think it does.
Not necessarily, but that's a building code. Permitting.
Agreed, but when you, when you connect them together, I think, um, at the junction, that changes materially what its purpose is. So. I just want to make sure that it's a, that, you know, if you're, if you're connecting those, maybe this is, this is peripheral to what we're talking about, but. This again goes back to the challenge of, you know, that. These questions should have been answered earlier, and now we're going back in time trying to answer questions that could have been answered in interactions with staff. You know, in the permitting process.
My, my perspective from code is, is that having it connected doesn't make it a structure. Still needs the definition of a wall or fence. Definitely of the utmost importance to make sure it meets all factors of safety, which is why. We would require that permit, and that's something that's required for any wall or fence over eight feet or retaining wall. So. I think that's, that's a huge part of it, but I don't think the connection. By code definition would, would make it anything but a wall.
Is there any ordinance that talks about materials of fence and regulations of materials, says?
Regulations that can't be uncoated chain link. There's, there's not any more stuff to be concerned on what's considered inappropriate.
So. I know that there is a previous retaining wall here, so they built upon the top of the retaining wall. They, so from a structural standpoint. Are, I mean, those stairs were. Were they built with this or?
My, my understanding, I don't know exactly, is that they, they poured a, a concrete pad out to the side of the, the home. And then put this fence. In when they poured that pad. And how it's connected and, and that kind of thing, I don't, I don't have, this is the plan we have for it. It does look like the guardrail for the stairs is probably affixed to the inside wall of this fence.
But if it's.
And that's.
Line, yeah. So that's the property line that's dotted.
Uh, yeah.
So they're setback on the property line a foot and a half to be.
Yeah, there is, there's space there.
Which we don't actually require for fencing to be.
So.
But those stairs would not be considered a wall or fence.
The stairs?
Yeah.
No. I would agree.
So. Given that.
But they aren't considered a structure either.
No.
Their stairs.
But could they, can they be built with no setback?
Stairs that don't go above grade a certain amount? Yes, they can be built.
You could build it right up.
If they go down below natural grade, they can be built right up to the property line. Yeah.
Thank you, yeah.
Or if they put an awning over it, it would help to meet the setbacks, too. If it was. Above grade, or if they, like, covered their stairs with a. With an awning, that's when we require it to be the setback.
Yeah, the, the code is pretty circular, but the str- structure, as far as the code is defined, it, it, it says it has to be habitable space and, and, and whatnot. So. I, I, I think staff's hundred percent right. Um, a- a- and I, this is why I said the, the neighbors arguing, the neighbors attorney's argument on this was just, I, I think, just wrong on the, on the statute. It's not a structure. It, it's, it's a fence or, or whatnot, but, um, I, I, I still have, I, I still have a hard time with some of the determinations. Because the way that the actual code is written, it's so, it's so generic and it's so open-ended that it's, it's. Pretty much our determination on whether or not the, uh, safety, comfort, and general wel- welfare of the person residing in the working vicinity, work. Working or residing in the vicinity or, or, or impacted or not.
And, and keep in mind, it's whether they're impacted more than they would be under a. Six-foot fence.
Oh, I, I, yeah, I get it, but that, that's, that's not the consideration. I mean, you don't think, what, what?
Yeah.
It is the consider, because we're not considering the whole wall. It's just the portion in the back that extends above six feet.
I mean, they could just get a concrete saw and just saw it off, and then it's just a non-issue.
They sure could.
And, and it would be a lot cheaper than the attorney fees they're paying.
Any other questions on this one?
Was there a particular reason that it was, um? Continued to this week, other than for my benefit? Um, was there something we were waiting on and did we receive it?
Public comment, just to see if there's any, you know, it's a back, it's a back fence and seeing if there is any other additional. Information that, you know. And nothing, nothing came in.
It was just the one public comment we sent you guys from, from the, um. Applicant.
Okay.
Do, do we, do we have available, I, I, I can bring it up from two weeks ago, but do we have available, um, the. The neighbor's attorney's argument on this. He, he mentioned something also about. I. I, I want to say something about parking or, or lights or something like that. I don't know that it was that. Influential to me, but I, I, I just recall seeing something about that.
The neighbor's lawyer, um, sent something that was attached. To the last meeting. It was public comment for, for October fifth meeting. I don't believe they've sent anything new. I can. Look to pull that up, though, from the last one. Let's. You got it?
Yeah, I, I mean, there was a specious argument about, about the structure that I didn't, I didn't bite into, but there was some other stuff about. Some of the parking and whatnot that.
Doesn't impact any parking areas.
Yeah. I, I thought they said something about they're, they're backing up into the area or something like that, that they. That they were potentially. Oppose the hazard risk.
I'll keep looking.
I think it's important to keep in mind, too, that, I mean. Listen and read all public comments, of course, always, but we have to understand the relevance to what it is we're evaluating. We're evaluating that section of. We're evaluating that section of how, I can't remember how far much the eighth foot is, but it's. Wha- whatever that is, that's what we're evaluating. If there's issues with. Noise or light, again, we're back to code enforcement or something like that, that and the neighbors. We're not, it's, we're, it's not what we're gonna.
There's a lot of moving parts to the.
Yeah, for sure.
We're good to kind of. Come back to. What that hand, and then it's. Been a really challenging one, so it's a good.
Sounds like it.
Good perspective. It doesn't look like we have um. The applicant, well, I don't, I think I have the same view as Heather. It doesn't look like we have the applicant. Um or the neighbor's representation yet in the meeting. They they may attend the business session, so. If you guys have questions too about clarification on that um. As to what was built or or anything there, we can.
I'm just looking back at notes from the public comments from the neighbor's attorney from when they they uh shared there. And it was about that they believe that this is a structure which we've already.
This is.
Oh, there.
This is the conclusion from that letter, the four criteria that they provided. The structure argument uh for number one. Uh they believed it was greater than eight feet. We didn't measure that and confirm it's it's not. Um number three is associated with that as well.
Let me ask you a question about the eight feet.
Yeah.
The the pictures give the impression that. Where he's standing slopes up from the yard and he measures from the top of that slope up. So the yard itself is down lower.
Mm-hmm.
Is that built up there from where he measured?
So, so it's it's from the ground, yeah, wherever the fence hits the ground to the highest point, we didn't. Rely on the measurement, the pictures of the measurements. I went out there with a member of the planning staff and we. Took the the measure to the natural grade between the two property lines.
Okay.
So not appear artificially. And measured it to the top and it was eight.
That's a good question, because it can be challenging to know what is natural grade, but.
It's built up on one side and not the other, though you have a pretty good guess, but.
Yeah, and neighbor consent is not required at eight feet.
Correct, just if you're above eight.
So the second point isn't relevant necessarily.
No, uh yeah, number two and three are kind of tied together there. Um but but we've confirmed it's it's not higher than eight feet.
Yeah, I mean.
Four are related to um their interpretation of this as a structure.
The the consent's not required, but the determination we have to make. That there's a condition that says that such use will will not, under the circumstances of the particular case. Be detrimental to the health, safety, comfort, order, general wel- welfare of the persons residing or working in the vicinity. So I mean, like, I I, you know, staff has made the argument that, like, you know, if it's a six foot fence, you still have noise, you still have, you know. Whatnot, but we we still have to make the determination. Uh of whether or not. Um. It comports and and whether or not, you know, some something else could have been done on the land to 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 deal with. The argument that the applicant has put forward about, you know, giving the dogs. Um access.
But you you only have to consider the two additional feet in that short. Correct. Of the western side of the fence, not the beginning side. And their argument is that the dog run is on the further northeast side, not.
No, I mean, I mean, it it's it's almost this weird argument that they're making of like, well, they they absolutely need it, you know, to to keep the dogs in. Reality is, is if six feet was good on the front end, why, you know, could they have not have just sloped down? And and kept it at six foot the entire way versus like they're asking for the additional two feet because of the slope of the land, but. I mean, if 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 it's just to keep the dogs in. If six feet was good for two thirds of the fence, why isn't it good enough for the for the one third?
I would come back to the additional rationale that's been provided for this application and and found by staff to hold up, which is. Increased need for privacy based on the slope conditions between two properties. So, you know, staff agrees that the dog rationale is is maybe not. Hurtening to the scope of work, but. Uh staff has found and continues to find that there are other factors here that merit our recommendation of approval.
No, I I I I get it. It's it's one of these things of like, these are always the most contentious issues and in in any I. You know, I land use. Authority or city council or whatever else, it was always offenses. Um I I I just, I have a hard time with this one.
Um keep in mind the state statute also for conditional uses that they shall be approved unless there are negative. Proceed negative impacts that can't be mitigated with reasonable conditions.
Yeah, I mean, this this is really hard, though, because it's like, you know, like, on on one hand, like. We're supposed to pretend like it's not built and we don't, we're not aware of like. Negative impacts, but the the reality is we have public comments saying it's built and and there are negative impacts. So I don't, I don't under, like, I I'm having a hard time rationalizing that piece of it. Of like saying like, we we have to. Completely pretend that even though we know there are negative impacts that that potentially violate at least two paragraphs. Of the determinations that we we can't determine that.
I'm not hearing a negative impact of the section of the wall that's eight feet. I I I'm not, I'm not hearing, I'm not hearing that at all.
So, so they 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 built it for a dog run or 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 to to house their dogs or to let their dogs out, you know. A couple feet away from their neighbor's house versus that the the vast majority of of the rest of their land that they have. I mean, if you if you have a decent parcel and you have dogs. There's lots of places for them to go versus like being a couple feet away from the house.
So would the neighbor be able to.
Why was.
State and imply. A property right disconnect on somebody else's neighbor.
No, I I. No, I understand that, but I mean, the the workaround for for the the landowner on this is they could have just built a six foot fence and then they don't even need to. They don't even need to come to us, right?
I don't think that's necessarily true, and you consider the factor that they've desired increased privacy without eight foot may merit.
Can you pull up?
Additional privacy for 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 what, though?
Google Maps or just the map there.
Just a share of privacy of being able to have privacy in your yard.
It it is hard to argue. But this last little portion of the wall being higher adds to the privacy in any meaningful way.
Except for following the slope of the, it it's eight feet be- because of the fact of the slope of the land, right?
Yeah, but I think everybody pretty well understands that that's because the aesthetics of the wall are better because of that, not because they wanted that extra. Few inches.
Right, they're building, they're, they're building the wall for privacy purposes.
Yeah, the wall, but that extra piece was just a matter of design, really, I think.
And again, I I understand Commissioner Epler's point that we don't necessarily operate on precedent. Staff. Updates us on those things, but.
But but it does.
Impact.
It it does come into play.
It does, and I'm I'm going to acknowledge that. So the, but the negative, the negative impact, I don't think has anything to do with the dogs. It's the fact, it's the slope. Negative impact is the slope, and if if the history in Conwood Heights is that. To mitigate the negative impact of slopes is that we've made exceptions. Let's say that there's no other, we don't have any other pieces of information about this. If historically, if you're looking at this blindly in another part with other parties, there's a negative impact of a slope, and so they want an exception. So to increase privacy, you don't know anything else about the situation. You'd say, have we done this before? Yeah, ten out of the ten times that we've allowed for an exception. Or uh when the neg- the only negative impact was the slope. That was the only negative impact was a slope and that effect on privacy, not dogs, not air conditioning units or anything like that. It's just simply geography. We've already been doing that. Now, that's where I come back to, just it's a very, very, I I say we strip everything away, we come back to. That's what the code says, that's what we've done historically. If this were to be appealed, I think that's where it's going to land again.
Yeah, I think you bring up a really good point too of like. Maybe if that's not actually what we want, change the code down the road, kind of change the way it's written, because the work, work in progress to.
Be careful now.
I think it's a good point, kind of sharing like. Have what we have with the code and. Maybe there are changes we'd make to it, maybe not, but that's what's before us, so.
Share this here. So what?
Yeah, so there's access throughout the whole backyard.
It was, so it's this property here, and this photo is under construction. Um so you can access the whole backyard. Well, I don't, I don't know what the slope is. You know, I know it slopes off, you know, I I can't, I don't know exactly what the.
Well, you can follow this little drawing and see the slope pretty well.
Sure, yeah. But, I mean, there's yard access.
I'm just asking if it's like the dogs are trapped.
Yeah, are the dogs trapped in that section or is it accessible throughout the whole backyard?
Uh.
There's, there's a gate there, so it seems like they are. There's a gate by the stairs.
Well, what if the neighbor didn't like children? And the children are noisy. And they wanted to build the fence for that. Then do we say, we'll keep your children in one part of the yard because then it's not, I mean, I think that, I think we have to. I I I think that we've just kind of looked at this as like. It's like, this is, this is this this. Standard request to have a four feet, I don't even know how far it is, four feet of eight foot of a twelve foot fence. I I don't know if those are, I don't know if that's the right dimensions, but whatever. And the, it's eight feet because the natural slope of the land is that way and they wanted to have a fence, so, and I get it, I mean, I think I'd want to have that too as a. Exactly, the whole, it's exactly, a good point, yeah, I mean, that's.
And I think the the lesson learned here for all future folks that are looking to be building an eight foot fence. Is get approval. If you have contention with your next door neighbor, get approval per first, because it is something that the precedent there is that you will approve it as Conwood Heights.
I think it's always a good idea to let your neighbor know what's going on and kind of talk through that, so.
Yeah.
I mean, the both, the key word is you say privacy and.
Exactly.
Everybody. Could make the argument that they need privacy, so they need the difference. Is really critical. What we're talking about is the additional impact of that little piece of blue there. Has nothing to do with dogs, has nothing to do with what they use that piece of yard for. All of those things are.
Irrelevant.
Irrelevant to the question, what impact does that little sliver?
Oh, yeah.
Of that little wedge of wall have that changes the dynamic of the.
Right. Oh, that's a great illustration.
Yeah.
This was submitted by the applicant's legal representation, so wasn't created by staff, but.
I mean, I think, I think it gives the the visual.
You guys approve of this too?
It's it's close. We haven't measured this on site, but it's.
Representative of what it.
It it starts exceeding six feet where the property slopes. I mean, and that's generally what's shown there.
And and it is hard for anyone to argue that that blue section of the wall. Has. A big impact as opposed to the green section of the wall, which is fully permitted. That it changes the impact of the wall in a material way. And I think that's the question.
Mm-hmm, I agree.
Does Shane have any other insight that we, I saw that he jumped on?
You can hear, yeah, I'll let him jump in if he does.
Shane, do you have any other insight for us on this?
No, I I I think that sounds uh like a good discussion on on the issue, and I agree that that uh. That visual is helpful.
Okay, if there's a.
Well, we managed.
No other.
We don't know where to talk to her about that.
You wouldn't have anything else to like else on?
It's a long lapse around the Mulberry Bush.
On the recording, any? Or should, do I have a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
All right.
Bye.
Any opposed?
I don't think we have anyone listening, so we don't need to say we'll resume at six, but it was noticed that way, so people will know they're joining us.